I call to order this meeting at the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, August 27, 2024, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 3920 Mickey Gilly Boulevard, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Welcome. Board members present, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Crystal Davila, Ms. Paola Gonzalez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick will join us in executive session, Vicki Morgan, Nelda Sullivan, and me, Casey Phelan. And there are no board members absent. Let the record indicate that the quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation this afternoon will be given by Ms. Gonzalez and the pledges by Ms. Davila. Will you please stand?
Let's pray. God, thank you so much for this beautiful day. Thank you for bringing us together and keeping all of our kids safe. I pray that you continue to keep everyone within our district safe, that they may continue learning, growing, and we just can't wait to see all of those beautiful accomplishments that they have. Thank you for everything that you're doing in our lives, and I pray that you help us on the board to make decisions that honor and glorify you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
And I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Moving on to the public comments according to policy BED Local, there are no public comments. Section 3, Public Meeting to Discuss the Budget and Proposed Tax Rate for 2024-2025, presented by Mr. Ben Poppy.
So, board members, as you remember, before we bring Mr. Poppy up here, we have been talking about budget for some time. Our first budget workshop, we started with a budget deficit of almost $40 million, and that's what I like to call everything in the kitchen sink, all the wishes and wants of the different departments and campuses. But as we knew, we could not bring that forward. ESER was ending, and that funding going away, that federal funding, was going to hit all school districts hard. And of course, as you've seen, whether you've watched the news or read it in the newspaper, districts across the state have had a hard time balancing their budgets, and that's meant cutting staff, cutting resources. We've done our very best in Pasadena ISD to protect the programs and the opportunities that our students and parents have become accustomed to. And like all districts, we waited around as we developed the budget, wanting good news from our state leaders, but we did not get that. As you know, all school funding was tied to vouchers, so there was no news that you were hearing or that we were hearing that was giving us any hope for a raise in basic allotment. In fact, even though inflation was at a rate of about 22%, there was no adjustment made to basic allotment, and there has been no adjustment made since 2019. So we had our work cut out for us. The team started working together with campus leaders and district leaders to work on that deficit. We worked, we cut staff through attrition. As you know, we reduced department budgets by 3%, and we made some really tough decisions that we're bringing you tonight in our final budget. So it was a process that lasted over six months. Tonight's the night we hear public discussion on the budget and the proposed tax rate. On the agenda, further down on the agenda is the Budget and Tax Rate Resolution for Adoption and Approval. So Mr. Poppy is here, who had a huge part in this and providing information to you throughout the process, and he's going to come and give an overview of not only the budget but the tax rate and answer any questions that you or the public has.
Well, good evening, President Phelan, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Powell. We're here to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate and allow for any public comments. State law requires that we advertise the public hearing, providing the public with the opportunity to discuss the proposed budget and the tax rate. The advertised notice was published on August 14. So the local maintenance and operation budget is $543,425,063. Salaries and operations of the district for the general operating budget. This budget includes a 2% general pay increase, which the board approved this past June, and we appreciate that and acknowledge all the hard work that the staff does and that you appreciate that. Maximizing the disaster pennies that are eligible to the district in response to the tornado in January of 2023. Bringing expenses from the federal ESER to the general fund, as Dr. Powell talked about, and the fiscal year change that's effective July 1, 2025, which the board approved back in April, and the Texas Education Agency has been notified. Then we have the food service budget, which is $49,024,946, and this is the daily operations to feed our students. Then the debt service is $73,462,000, and that's just the amount that we need to pay on the upcoming year on our bonds. And then the total budget is $665,912,009, and the proposed tax rate to support the budget is as follows. The maintenance and operation rate is 0.8855, and then the INS rate is 0.3400. So a slight increase on the MNO rate and a flat rate on the debt service rate. Our total tax rate of 1.2255. This includes the full eligible amount of disaster pennies, the maximum rate without requiring voter approval. This is an overview of the proposed budget and tax rate, and we'll go over more as both of these are on the agenda item later tonight. I turn it back to the board president and ask for any public comments.
Are there any public comments regarding the budget or what Mr. Poppy just reviewed? Okay.
Board, any questions from the board?
Talk more about it this evening, too.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Poppy.
Mr. President, you might want to just go ahead and just declare the time for the conclusion of the public hearing.
Time to conclude the public hearing for the budget discussion is 5:36 PM.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Move on to Policy Update Presentation by Ms. Hun, General Counsel.
Hello, good afternoon. Have this up. Okay, you should have a TASB Recommended Notebook that I put together for you so you could easily go through the policies. So as you'll see, on the first page, we'll have the table of contents. We have six for this week. We have six TASB policies that were sent to us, update 123 for revision. We have four that are proposed for revision, a new policy, and one that is going to be recommended for deletion. I know a lot of times we expect that everyone understands the way these policies are marked up, but just a little refresher, anything in red is something that was deleted, anything in blue is new language, and then the double green is any information that was not changed but moved to a different part of the policy. So the way the notebook is set up, you'll have the agenda item, the red line item, and then a clean copy of the policy for your convenience. The first policy is going to be BBD Local. Now, this is a policy addressing TPIA training, Texas Public Information Act training. And in House Bill 3033, authorize the Attorney General to require trustees to complete any TPI training if there is anything in the district where the district possibly violated any provisions of the act. So the AG is authorized to request that the district staff, as well as trustees, take training. That training has to be completed within 60 days of the notice, and it cannot be delegated to any other district employee. Any questions on that particular one? No?
I'm just amazed, and when you started the conversation, you said six days. I think they're changing the policy every day.
Yes, yes, they are.
And it seems like so much redundancy, like on page six. We've abided by these rules for years, and it's hard for me to understand why now we need to change it from one thing to another.
Well, the provisions that require, especially for board members to take mandated training, that's going to remain the same. This will only come into play if the district has a violation. So if, for some reason, we mishandled a TPIA request, the Attorney General got involved, if they believe that we require additional training, that's the only time that they would send notice to the district, and it's a may, it's not a shall. So, you know, a lot of times I think it will depend on the severity of the violation. You know, I assume that there's been instances where people have ignored the regulations, and there's probably some minor ones. So my understanding of it, it's usually just a minor violation, you probably won't get the notice, but if it's a little bit larger and they feel that there's additional training, then they'll send out that notice. So that's new. Like you said, it keeps changing, but that is the latest provision on the additional training. Any other questions? Okay. The next one is also a board policy that has been updated, and this one deals with board member disclosures. So this is also an additional requirement, and while we know that state law establishes specific conflict of interest disclosures required from every board member, this is an additional requirement, and recommend language has been added, "to address any ethical duty of a board member to disclose a financial or personal interest in a board transaction or decision." And this would go beyond the statutory requirements of disclosure. So yes, this is a little bit more that they're putting additional requirement there for board members. Any questions on that particular one? The next one is, let's see, this is the additional disclosure. The next one has to do with, it's CKC Local Safety Program and Risk Management Emergency Plans, and this is an additional provision, and actually, we already have this in our practice, but to comply with legal requirements, they've added that in there just to make sure that it's in local policy. But this deals with notification to parents in any instance where there is a violent activity that's happened on campus. It could be on campus, it could be a school-sponsored event or outside, a school-related event. So if anything in that there's a violent activity or we're investigating a violent activity, we need to make sure that parents are notified. So they added that additional language in blue, that the superintendent shall develop procedures, which we already have in place. We do notify parents through Parent Square, it can be, it's an email, a text, and also a call, so we've been doing that for a while. You know, when I was getting ready for this, violent activity is not necessarily defined, but TASB TA guidance does indicate that it would be anything that poses a serious or continuing threat to campus community. So we've been doing this for a while. Any questions regarding this particular one?
I just have a statement. Our administration does an outstanding job of notifying the schools, the parents. It's all done so well, I don't ever get any questions or anything. So thank you for always taking care of me.
Thank you. So the next one we have is CKE Local. This is one of the new policies, and really what's happening in regards to this policy is TASB is trying to consolidate all policies that are addressing any security arrangements that the district may have. They're putting them all in one policy, and we presently have CKEA Local, and so they've moved relevant provisions from that policy into CKE Local. And so just to go over some relevant provisions, you'll see, let's see here, we have the... So there's not going to be any red line, but I do want to draw your attention to a couple of provisions that are notable. If you go to page 14, you'll see that there's limitations on non-school employment, so that has been a change. And the section on, this has to deal with, there was a section on temporary assignments in CKEA, and it has been incorporated into limitations on non-school employment to account for possible off-duty use by both the district and other agencies. Of any officers that are commissioned, shall provide law enforcement or security service to an outside employer without prior written approval of the police chief or the superintendent. So that was moved into the new policy. So that's a significant section. Another section is also on page 14, inter-local agreements or mutual aid, and that basically just talks about if we're into an agreement with an inter-local agency with another agency that we need to follow the agreements that we've put in there. So we're agreeing to do that one. Some language was added also on page 14 under body-worn cameras, and it just gives a little more direction to the district on how body-worn cameras are handled. And then on page 15, at the bottom, peace officers providing security services. That language was also moved over to the new policy, and it just really outlines how we handle the peace officers and other reserve retired peace officers or guardians that, you know, practices that we have. So this is really just to put all the policies in one, so we're not going to different sections and trying to determine how each section works together and what our obligations are. Any questions on this one? Yes, ma'am.
A comment. The guardian program has been fantastic for our district, and I think that we should give a shout out to each of those individuals because they've certainly brought the program to reality, buy-in to the schools, and most of all, to the students.
Yes, ma'am, I agree. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so as we talked about, we're going to see the deletion of CKEA Local. So that's really the next slide here. On page 17, 18, and 19, we've deleted that. So the next policy is going to be EFA Local, and this policy is really dealing with the selection of instructional materials that can be textbooks, related supplemental materials. So this is really dealing with the selection. So one thing that has been changed, and I'm going to point this out as a significant change, if you see on page 21, under selection, you'll notice that the language previously indicated that the supplemental material shall be chosen from the list of resources adopted by the State Board of Education. So the shall has been changed, and so now it indicates that we may include items from the State Board of Education list. So that is a significant change. Going down to page 22, we'll see another change here. This is also an important change. So the policy previously identified individuals who can submit a request for reconsideration of the instructional materials. So you'll see that students who are 18 years of age or older and any district resident has been omitted, and the people that can now submit requests for consideration are going to be district employees and parents or guardians of a district student. So that is also a significant change. Okay, and then going on to page 23, you'll see there's been a change, and this change was at the discretion of the district to follow their own procedures, but this basically will say, who will receive forms requesting the reconsideration? And we've identified our Director of Libraries as the person that will receive those forms. And then also, the second comment is addressing, again, where the form will be, and the third comment, who will be appointed, who will appoint the reconsideration committee, which is a big part of all this. So all these, we've decided per our practices that we're going to use a Director of Library Services to do those. Any questions regarding that particular policy? Okay, well, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
As always, you always get it together and have it in such a form that it's very easy for us to understand, and I really appreciate you.
Thank you. I'm glad that that's the case.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Section 5, we're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. We will reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. Okay, we're going to reconvene in open session at 7:04 PM. Going to open with the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I move we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel section.
Mr. President, I move that we approve addenda items A through D.
Second. Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Gonzalez.
So, not here with us today, but Ms. Melissa Loza has been approved for the position of counselor at Jensen Elementary School, so if you see her, be sure to congratulate. Sarah Burrows? Hello.
Here she is.
Ms. Sarah Burrows has been approved for the position of speech-language pathologist with the Special Education Department. Congratulations. Do you have any... Do you have any family or friends here with you today? We're happy to have you. Congratulations. Ms. Sarbo has been approved for the position of speech-language pathologist, and congratulations. I see you brought someone with you.
Awesome. Welcome back.
And Ms. Erica Carroll. So Ms. Carroll has been approved for the position of counselor-specialist for curriculum and instruction. Congratulations. Who did you bring with you today?
My husband, Pity. Aww.
Congratulations.
Awesome. Okay, well, you're more than welcome to stay if you want to, but we understand if you want to go, we'll allow you a few minutes to slip out. Congratulations to everyone. We welcome you to the family, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you so much. They're way quieter than the last group.
Not as many people.
Early in the year.
Yeah.
Let them rile up.
Oh, cool. Okay, so item two, under Personnel Section, dealing with the amendment of the superintendent's contract, we're going to take no action on this agenda until further discussion, so we'll be bypassing that one. Consideration possible approval of additional funding in the amount of $13,793,000 for PISD medical plan and authorization for superintendent or designee to add additional funds to ensure PISD medical plan ends the fiscal year with a positive balance. Second. Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
You know, we've taken a huge hit in June and July as people have taken care of their medical needs. I emailed you additional information. I know that y'all made some changes most recently that we think will have a huge savings to the plan going forward. So we have members here from Gallagher as well, in case you have questions, but we are working toward, of course, doing what we can to make sure we get this right for Pasadena ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Powell.
Any other questions? Any statements?
Historically, from what I read, it was run just coming out of the general fund, just whatever charges were surpassed the amount that was allotted, and moving forward, what, how does that change?
So we've done it both ways since I've been superintendent, and I've seen it prior to being, you know, when I was in the deputy role, and you can budget for those additional or you can pull it out of fund balance. But you have to be in the positive balance at the end of the year. So we could get some, is it called stop-gap? Gap? Stop-loss? Okay, well, we have a big gap, so I was calling it stop the gap, stop the bleeding. Stop-loss, some pharmacy rebates or prescription rebates. So there are things that could come in our favor, or perhaps not as many costs to the plan. As I was looking at June and July, we were talking about in tune of about $24 million, $25 million, so huge, huge use of the plan. And, you know, we've had conversations about the different plans and keeping those costs down for our employees. Our employees are very fortunate for what y'all do. Y'all have increased the district contribution, so that's going to help. We've also looked at going out for new RFP for pharmacy and for medical. We've been with Aetna for a long time, and I'm not saying that's not the best plan, but it's always wise, just like you shop for your car insurance, to shop for the best insurance for our employees and what's going to take care of their needs the most. So attacking it, if you're going to get your question answered, attacking it from a lot of different angles. We did put $5 million in this next budget for this purpose, to make sure we're addressing overages in the budget as well.
Is our clinic, wellness clinic, still a valuable asset to the district?
If you ask our employees, it's full all the time. It's a very valuable asset. A lot of them, even though we didn't intend for it to be their primary care physician, they use Dr. Hurtado and their team as their primary care physicians. A lot of trust in those medical professionals that are there, a lot of convenience for our employees using the clinic there, and I can tell you, my secretary alone would tell you it saved her life. So a lot of good stories that have come out of the care that our employees have been given at the clinic, but it's 100% capacity or more, full all the time.
Right.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of employee reclassification for the 2024-2025 school year for cost savings of approximately $110,000.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Certified personnel for the 2024-2025 school year is for information only. Support personnel for the 2024-2025 school year also for information only, which takes us to the educational section. Highlighting teaching, learning, and communication tools for 2024-2025. Spotlight will be presented by Melissa McCullough and Tracy Powell.
So, board members, you know we do board spotlights each time we meet to give you information about what's taking place, progress with our, of course, our strategic plan, but we thought it would be good to have these two brain experts here, I call them smarty-pants, because they have done a lot of work in front-loading on some of the new tools that our teachers are using, and they've done a lot of hard work in that, but they're going to give you just an overview of some of the new tools, some of the pain points, but also some of the things that you can expect down the road to help our teaching staff and others.
Change is hard, we know, but we're excited to be here with you all tonight. Good evening. We're excited to share the, some of the highlights from our implementation, like Dr. Powell was saying, the professional development that we've offered, and also some of the exciting data coming from some of our early adopters for some of these tools across our district. We always like to start here because our mission and vision grounds us in the work that we do here in Pasadena ISD, and the tools that we highlight tonight were intentionally chosen because they align to our mission and vision, and they support the outcomes that we have for our students. So let's start. So let's start with the focus on teaching and learning. You might remember last fall, after the committee made the decision to move forward with Canvas as our learning management system for fourth through 12th grade, we shared with you that this decision stemmed from the potential for Canvas to be our communication hub for teaching and learning across, for all stakeholders across our district. Additionally, it's a product designed to ultimately, in the end, to ease the teacher workload, and also to streamline the educational experience for our teachers, our students, and our families. The tool ensures also that we're able to share the instructional materials that we're using with our students to our families, which is a requirement by House Bill 1605 that went into place this school year. It aligns with our values. Canvas allows us to focus on learning, collaboration, and ultimately those results that we want to see for our students. So with our teachers, we began our Canvas journey last school year, and in February, at District-wide Staff Development, we rolled out our Teacher Foundation course, and every one of our teachers, our instructional staff, got to log into Canvas for the first time. And also, from January to July, our teachers had an opportunity to complete that course with support, of course, from the district via those virtual office hours, on-demand support. And then teachers had an opportunity to continue that learning journey with over 30 different face-to-face asynchronous and virtual professional development sessions that we offered throughout the summer. We followed up this school year, of course, in professional development in August, where our teachers came back together and kind of reset, and we called it Get Ready for Day One with Canvas. So we spent some time in August with Canvas and have provided virtual office hours nearly every day since then, as well as on-campus support. Our students dove in headfirst last week as we launched our Student Orientation Course, where they're learning the ins and outs of Canvas. And then, so this year, our students, fourth through 12th grade, have the opportunity to have a streamlined experience from classroom to classroom and school to school with one LMS. Over 2,000 assignments have already been launched and delivered to our students already at Week Three of school. And so it's exciting to see how our teachers are leveraging Canvas for learning opportunities and also assessments. Collaboration is one of our values, and Canvas allows for our teachers to be able to collaborate across their team, but also across the district, to share resources and also assessments that they build, which has been a big ask from our teachers. Our core teachers were provided with a comprehensive curriculum, along with already-built-out digital tools inside of Canvas, and our teachers received their first unit of study ahead of summer break, so that if they chose to, they could dig in and prepare for this school year. It's not just our teachers that can collaborate using Canvas. Our students also have an opportunity. Over 2,400 discussion posts have already been launched with our students this school year, so they're able to collaborate peer-to-peer and student-to-teacher. And then finally, our last outcome with Canvas is a focus on results. Mastery Connect is the assessment system that's built into Canvas that allows us to track data by student by standard. 300 PISD pre-made assessments were delivered to our teachers in that system that are aligned to the rigor of our state standards. You can see that almost 10,000 students have already been assessed, and our teachers can use that real-time data to start intervention with our students, so we can accomplish the goals that we have for them for college career and military readiness.
So paired with that, when we're thinking about focusing on results, we're also additionally looking at how we're going to integrate our student information system, Skyward, which we've had for a long time, along with a tool called Elevation that we've also had, and then this year with Embrace. That data for campus leaders and for teachers paints a big picture of our students' needs, whether they're academic, behavioral, or language development. This year, as we begin to transition to Embrace, this is the tool that will be used for creating and implementing and monitoring our individual education plans. The goal of this tool is to streamline the process, make it much more transparent to everybody who's a part of helping develop those individual education plans. It also includes language supports for translation for students' home-family language, and it not only, it takes it a step further than the previous tool and translates all of the documents, so that the home family can have access to the information that they need to be informed and be a part of that development. Additionally, as we transition, there's been trainings of over 500 of our teachers and campus leaders that the Special Education Department has provided, and they'll continue to provide those trainings on a weekly basis, both virtually and in person throughout this semester and into the next. So an exciting kind of combination of both a learning management and assessment system, and then really concrete, specific data on students' identified needs. Additionally, part of moving in this direction was, if you remember, last April, we talked a little bit about the Committee on Generative AI, right? Really hot topic, lots out there. So as we go into this school year, we're launching Magic School, and we talked about really doing that in a safe way that protects our data and privacy, the security. So this tool has over 70-plus AI tools. It's one of the leading tools for teachers, built by educators, to help make their life easier as they go into doing the work, so they can put more of their time into instruction in the classroom. So when we think about the fact that the kids are our why, and teaching and learning is the core of the work, we have to think about, at the base of that is creating a safe environment. And part of creating the safe environment is having tools that allow us to communicate with our staff, our families, and our students really effectively. So over the last year, we've been slow-rolling, piloting, and soft-rolling out a unified communications platform called Parent Square. Parent Square allows us a safe and secure environment to communicate with all of our stakeholders. It also provides parents with the preference choice, so you can decide, I can decide as a parent, how do I want to be communicated with? Do I want to receive emails, or app notifications, or text messages, or phone calls? And if my home language is different than English, I can make that preference. And my teachers, staff, and campus leaders can communicate with me directly within that app, so that we can have more close communication. As our district has rolled that out last year, we started receiving messages through that tool in December. And then this summer, we launched the mobile-friendly version of the new website. This website allows us to get lots of information about how to better connect with our families. And, this is super exciting, over 99% of our students had a contact with a parent through Parent Square from their campus in the last two weeks. That is amazing and exciting. And over the last week, 22,000 messages were sent between staff and parents and parents and staff, 1,500 posts connecting the district and campuses with families. So, oh, thank you, yes, because that's very exciting. We should clap, yay. But one of the really cool things about this that I love is that this particular tool is allowing us two-way communication with families. Because as you can see of the examples on the screen, like Pasadena High School's back-to-school stuff, or Park View's open house, parents are able to give their feedback in a social kind of way, but they're also able to ask questions. And then our campuses are able to respond and quickly be able to make movement and communication that gets people the right information that they need about events and information. But the beauty of it is, is that that two-way communication is even more powerful, because one post allows you to seek multiple platforms. So in this example from Laura Bush Elementary, the principal put a post in Parent Square to say, hey, I've got an event, please come have conversation with me, parents. One click of the button, it went to her school website, her school Facebook, and any other social media that she had. Plus, she could print the flyer and send it home in their, in their elementary folders, right? So lots of ways to communicate, but she was able to leverage one post and hit a lot of different ways to communicate with people. And that's super exciting.
Question, I'm sorry to stop you from your role, but when it, when they plug into it as far as a principal or whoever, does that automatically switch to a home language? Or is that a different?
So every parent who has their home language selected in Skyward, Skyward tells Parent Square what their preferred home languages. And then as they receive it, it changes the communication. Now, our flyers and things that we add, we still need to translate and add those in, but any typed communication comes in the home language. So that also kind of highlights how important it is for our annual verifications and our updated information in Skyward, because that means that we get the right information in the right place for our parents. Teachers also can use Parent Square to communicate, and it talks to Canvas. So then, parents, teachers, students, all communicating across different platforms, getting the information that they need to help support their students being successful. The last little highlight that I want to mention to you is the fact that, I started this with the safety concept, right? And Parent Square allows us to send very specific safety alerts. Those safety alerts are sent in the case that we, maybe we have a school that needs to dismiss due to some kind of event, like maybe we had that earlier this week, or we have some school closure, or heaven forbid, any other type of safety alert. What this safety alert allows from the district level is to be able to override the parent's preference, so that they get an email, a phone call, and a text message when it's truly a safety issue, and they need to have that information immediately. It's an exciting way. So when we're thinking about clear, consistent, unlimited communication, never before in our district have we been in a location where we can take one tool and do all of these things to reach our community. So we're super excited about it, as you can tell, I'm a little passionate about it. But we're really thankful that you allowed Tracy and I to join you tonight and share about the teaching and learning and communication tools, and they're helping us make our outcomes. So we're here now for you and for any questions you might have for us.
Thank you so much for your dedicated work on this project. I can see all the benefits, and it puts us in an upgraded level. Thanks to both of you.
The communication was absolutely fantastic, and we really appreciate that. I see huge, huge gaps, huge gaps closing because of the work that you guys have done. And the parent proponent is absolutely incredible. I think we're going to really grow from this. And there's nothing about it that's not wonderful, and y'all are wonderful. Like I say, the presentation was incredible. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's a lot of people's hard work to get up here. We just get to share the message, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I think a lot of times, communication is probably the biggest breakdown in what happens. And it seems like this is going to address a majority of that, so fantastic.
Yes. So I will say thank you. As a parent with five kids, it's all in one place. Thank you so much. Helped a lot. So I saw all of the excitement over the 99%. So could you tell us about what that was before?
Well, I can't give you an exact number of what it was before, but what I can tell you is, is that Parent Square tells me that there is no other district that is anywhere close to 99% communication in the first two weeks of school that they have. And so that is a testament of the work of campuses and getting it right.
And it's just amazing that we get to communicate with parents that way and keep in contact in their home language. So anyway, great job. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So did Parent Square replace other apps that were used in the past, like Remind? Yeah, so it's one central location. And I know that when it comes to Pasadena ISD, sometimes we have events that I've seen, and I always think that have a lot of potential for more people. Is this also going to be a means to communicate those type of events that are happening district-wide?
Yes, absolutely. So right now, if you're in the app, this is just a fun feature. District-wide events show up with a banner that's blue. Other events, I see you nodding because you've got five kids, right?
Twenty banners.
District events are spread across all of the app notifications, and they're, have a blue color. And then other campuses have their campus color. And so that gives you a visual clue to who's sending those events.
Yeah, and when it comes to, let me see, on page, well, this one, when it has all the three different apps, are those three different softwares that we're using, Skyward, Elevation, and Embrace? Okay. I guess it can be a little bit overwhelming, because there are three different softwares that we're using, and then we have Canvas as well.
So Skyward's our main student information system, so that's where everything is housed, like the student's schedules, all their personal information. So that kind of took over from our previous, I guess, warehouse of data. And so Elevations for our ELL students?
Yes, we've had Elevation for several years, and it is a strategy and priority for helping ensure that we get differentiation to our EB's and our ELL students. So that's not a new tool, and neither is Skyward, really. And Skyward really houses, like Dr. Powell says, the information. But Canvas, if you think about it from like Schoology's perspective, right, the idea is that the teacher's in Canvas, that they're really doing that work, and they're grading in Canvas, and it's just sending that information over to Skyward. Now, they do have to, you know, gain information from Skyward, maybe for details or things like that. But we want to hopefully support them in living mostly in Canvas.
Okay, perfect, yeah. I do remember using Canvas when I was in college, and I liked it a lot. I really did. But recently, I did hear some concerns about Canvas and the PD. So I appreciate all the dates that y'all included when it comes to the professional development that was provided for our staff members.
Any other discussion? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration possible approval of the interlocal agreement with Region Four Education Service Center, ESC4, for the renewal purchase of OnData Suite software in the amount of
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of an interlocal agreement between Pasadena Independent School District and Texas Women's University for Speech Language Pathology Assistance in Speech Pathology and Internship and Externship with no financial implications.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of an interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and Pasadena Independent School District for Music Therapy in the amount of $9,785.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of subscription renewal for Brain Pop from September 1st, 2024, to August 31st, 2025, in the amount of $132,550.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the contract between Pasadena Independent School District and E-Therapy for Speech Language Therapy Services in the amount of $120,000.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the interlocal agreement with Region Four Education Service Center, ESC4, for the renewal purchase of TSDS Core and TSDS PEIMS, PEAMS Collection Software, in the amount of $5,750.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Yeah, what is the difference between this one and OnData, the one on page 82?
So Melissa, do you want to come up?
Yes, and Tommy's here also, our new director of SIS. So the difference between the two is, you know, our PEAMS is our data on our students, and we submit that every year. The first one that you had is about helping to check the data internally, so that we can check it all throughout the year and ensure that those submissions are accurate. The second one, the 5,001, provides our PEAMS team with training and support throughout the year as they go to make those really big submissions. And then the Region Four also provides a secondary check for them. So those are the two things. One's kind of a software tool to help check, one is service and support to help.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the continuation of a Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, JROTC, unit at Sam Rayburn High School.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Is there any discussion?
I just want to add that I think this is one of the top programs in our district, and they call them a year-end activities with a great banquet that's-
and they call them year-end activities with a great banquet that's held here in Pasadena, and parents are a part of this. It's a wonderful event to go to and to see our students all dressed in their finery in such discipline and respect. It's a great opportunity in our district for our young people to succeed.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? I've also been to Rayburn's Ball and been around those kids. I went to ROTC four years at Pasadena High School. I loved every minute of it. It helped me make my decision to join the Marine Corps. I think it's a fantastic thing that our district offers, and the fact that we have at so many campuses speaks volumes for the way our district handles military and everything else. I think it's wonderful. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the 2024-2025 Safety and Facilities Enhancement SAFE Grant, Cycle II, in the amount of $1,255,731.
So move.
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? I think that's the rowdyest y'all have been. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the Kaboom Playground Community Partner Agreement Contract, which requires an $8,500 contribution from Genoa Elementary School.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anytime I get to say Kaboom in a board meeting. Consideration possible approval of the contract between Pasadena Independent School District and Avondale House in the amount of $842,350 for tuition and education services for 15, that's one five, special education students.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan. Second by Ms. Sullivan. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Davila? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the Sam Rayburn High School ban to travel to Lake Charles, Louisiana, to compete in the Gulf Coast Championship Marching Competition at McNeese State University on October 26, 2024, at a cost of $12,250 to be paid with the district and booster club funds.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Morgan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have some discussion. Mr. Embry has led this program and this team for so many years, and I actually got to go through the streets a couple of years ago with him and the band and the parents, and that was the coolest thing. So I want to give a little shout out, since we're giving shout outs to Mr. Embry.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Of course, yeah, good luck. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Policy section. Consideration possible revision of BBD Local Board Members' Training and Orientation.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible revision of BBFA Local Ethics Conflict of Interest Disclosure.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible revision of the CKC Local Safety Program Risk Management Emergency Plans.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Morgan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible addition of new policy, CKE Local Safety Program Risk Management Security Personnel.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? I think this streamlines all the safety things and concerns that we have into one location. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible deletion of CKEA Local Security Personnel Commission Peace Officers.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible revision of EFA Local Instructional Resources Instructional Materials.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the financial section. Consideration possible approval of budget amendments for July 2024.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments for August 2024.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of GASB 54 Fund Balance Resolutions.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Mr. Poppy, is there anything you need to go over here or just answer any questions? Do you have any questions about?
No, I just have a clarification. There's a typo on my last name for the contract.
Okay, we will get that resolved. That's on the, did you get that, Ms. Jordan? Caught it on one of them.
Any other discussion?
Approval as amended.
Approval as amended, yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of adoption of the 2024-2025 budget. Motion by Mr. Fernandez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Morgan. Discussion.
Well, board members, as we went over it earlier before you went into executive session, we just reviewed all the different highlights and changes that have been made throughout the process. So Mr. Poppy is here. If you have any additional questions, as he stated earlier, we did work on this for quite some time and make as many cuts as we felt like we could still have the programs again and the opportunities for our students throughout this coming school year.
Is there any other discussion? Thank you, Dr. Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of board resolution to adopt a tax rate for Maintenance and Operations, MNO, of .8855 and tax, and a tax rate for interest and sinking, INS, of .3400 for a total tax rate of $1,225.00.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the operations section. Consideration possible approval of a construction contract with the Gamma Construction Company for the 2022 Bond New Bailey Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? We have, go ahead, Dr. Powell.
The Vice President Vance Broussard is here and Mike Go, the project manager, so they're out in the audience.
Welcome, gentlemen.
They are no stranger to Pasadena ISD. They worked for us back in the eighties, and I have some information up here if you want to look at some of their more recent projects. I did speak to Dickinson ISD and Katie ISD, and they were very, very pleased with the products that you produced in their districts. Highly, highly recommended.
We're glad that you're back in Pasadena. And you know that gentleman sitting next to you then. Very good. It's nice to have you with us tonight.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Final Change Order Number 007 for the new administration building replacement project in the credit amount of $23,638.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion?
Would you please have some heaters put in this building?
Cannot complain about, remember, it was supposed to be so hot in the other one? I mean.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will warm Nelda up.
Base heater.
Consideration possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number A-013 for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the amount of $113,708.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number A-014 for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the credit amount of $48,640.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing MEP Commissioning Service Agreement with Coastal Commissioning Groups for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the amount of $30,000. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of an HVAC Testing and Balancing Service Agreement to Engineered Air Balance Company, Inc., for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the amount of $46,775.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA Number 07 for the 2022 Bond Safety and Security Project in the amount of $105,000.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Morgan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the miscellaneous section. Public comments according to BED Local related to topics not listed on the agenda. We have Ms. Rabe, Mr. Valdez, and Ms. Ellen Hernandez. This portion of the public comments is limited to speakers who are addressing items not listed on the open session portion of the agenda for this meeting. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane vulgar language. Complaints about an individual student and/or employee should seek resolution through the district grievance process outlined in the applicable passing of ISD Board Policy DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others and in doing so refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comments portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead. This admonishment goes for positive or negative remarks. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Mr. Fernandez, can you track three minutes? We'll keep time and we'll indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired.
Good evening. My name is Yan Rabe. I'm an educator and the Houston Area Chapter Leader of Start School Later. We bring awareness to teen sleep deprivation when school starts in the seven, early seven o'clock. And the main word here, word for the day, is circadian rhythm. Circadian rhythm is the rhythm of sleep and wake time in a 24-hour cycle. And when I first heard of it, I didn't know what it was back in 2007. But, so teen sleep and teen circadian rhythm and adult circadian rhythm are very, are different. Teen sleep two hours later than adults. So now that school is back, students are back in school and they're very hardworking, ambitious. They want to do, take part in all, you know, in AP classes and then do after-school activities. And what I'm seeing is, these after-school activities, a lot of them take place outside in the heat. And when I'm driving home from work, it's 100 degrees out there. And students are out there until 6:30, band and sports-related activities and ROTC. And I think that's very hard on the students. So they need time to recover, but they won't be able to because they're not getting the sleep they need. They need 10 to, eight to 10 hours of sleep, whereas adults need seven to eight. And so that's why there's a recommendation to start school later by the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC. And this can be a liability issue now that, since this recommendation has been in place. And there are two states, Florida and California, where school has, is against the law to start before 8:30 for high schools and middle schools. So I think that you should consider that because of the liability issue, that if a student collapsed and passed away, as did one of my students when I was at Pasadena High School, I thought that was very tragic. And another thing I want to mention, so I would like, I hope that you revisit school start time. And another thing is, I emailed a board member and I did not get a direct response. And I think that that's not, that's not right, that I would like to hear directly from my board members and not have it go through Ms. Joan Jordan. She's a good person, but if I can have direct contact through email with my board members, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rabe. Mr. Edward Valdez.
Good evening. My name is Edward Valdez. I'm a former student of Pasadena High School, and I will tell you a story about how JROTC saved my life. Throughout my time at high school, I really enjoyed ROTC than I, than like any other class that I would have have so much. And because JROTC makes me a better student and it gets me discipline and motivation and help I need. And it gets me, oh, what did I say? It does help me give me, make me good friends in JROTC, while others, in my other class who have been suffered from, do bad influence, you know, do bad things. But JROTC helped me, helped me, saved me from that. If it wasn't for them, you know? And it gives me opportunity to travel by joining the drill team, which I did. Did the best, this is my, are my dress blues, by the way. And after school, I practiced drill team and very extreme heat, very extreme. And it really does change my life. And I think the school starts time should be no earlier than 8:30. Because why? Because I experienced sleep deprivation, especially throughout four years of high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez.
Thank you. My name is actually Reverend Ellen Hernandez. I'm here tonight because I have two students that attend Pasadena Memorial High School. One of my twins was sexually assaulted last year on campus. Campus ISD police falsified the police report, which I have been fighting nine months to obtain. Fortunately, Ms. Halford was able to force them to hand that over to me Friday via email. I also realized recently that the AP, the counselors at the school have not only falsified information to me, but their stories do not match up or line up with the PISD. I had to hear this morning my confirmation that it was never contacted, or the district attorney was never contacted. Neither was it filed correctly as the sexual assault that it so blatantly was. It was on camera. There were student witnesses. I would like to know what, in regards to the safety and security of the students at these high schools, when is that going to change? When are we going to have some sort of correlation with the truth and responsibilities that need to happen with our students that attend these schools? My daughter's twin now attends class with the same student, has started bullying her, harassing her, threatening her, intimidating her, and both of my students are on 504 for mental disabilities.